Good evening. The September 13th, 2018 City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Ms. Isabella Spencer, who is the first girl to sign up as a Cub Scout under the new program in the first in East Texas. Isabella is a member of PAC 613 and a fifth grader at Spring Hill Intermediate School. Please rise.
Will you bow your head as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for life itself and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work. Thank you for loving us. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I am asking if you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern and to do what is good and fitting. I pray for these things set before them today. Please help this council to choose those things that will benefit the city of Longview. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Isabella. We sure appreciate you coming tonight. Tonight in our employee recognition, we're going to recognize the Longview Police Department's school resource officers. Longview Police Department has one sergeant and six school resource officers, or SROs, that serve the Longview ISD, Pine Tree ISD, and Spring Hill ISD. These officers serve as law enforcement officers, counselors, and educators. The SRO considers the school they serve as their personal responsibility or their beat. They're there to bridge the gap between youth and law enforcement and create a positive role model for the students. An SRO is on campus to reduce juvenile crime and help the students formulate awareness to rules and authority. The SROs also teach students to avoid becoming a victim as a child and adult. The role of the SRO also assists in school administrations in lockdowns and lockouts, fire drills, inclement weather, and evacuation measures. The SRO becomes a valuable resource in evaluating and redefining the drills that can ultimately be a lifesaver to the faculty and children. Our SROs are on campuses for safety, but the majority of the time they become a counselor and teacher for the children as they grow. The SROs are known to almost every student in their school and are sought out for bullying, drug and alcohol uses, family problems, constitutional law topics, and many more concerns. The SRO becomes a pillar of trust and identity in the school and will be remembered by the students for a lifetime. The SROs take the time to help grow our schools and community from the ground up by establishing a great foundation with the student and law enforcement at an early age. Please come forward. Mark Alford, Brian Bankston, Josh Mars, Jose Montalvo, Robert Bryan, Craig Martin, and Roger Askew.
This is a fine group of gentlemen and a fine group of officers who, as I was reading, reminded me of how important the SROs are in our public schools. I can remember when my kids were in school, Officer Duffy and Officer Ivory were their SROs, and how I remember that because they make an impression, they make an impression, they make a difference. My kids still remember them, being able to go to them and talk to them and be their friend, and that's what they're there for. They're not just officers. Like I said, they're educators, they're counselors. They change these kids' lives. And you guys, you don't know what a role you play, but let me tell you, 20 years later, my kids know who theirs were, and these kids will know who y'all are. So that's a big responsibility on your shoulders, it's a big responsibility that you've taken on, and I appreciate the task that you've taken on. You do it very, very well. You make us proud. Thank you all so very much.
You really provide a service we can't do without. Thank you all so much. Appreciate y'all. Tonight in community recognition, I'm going to recognize Greg Jones. Greg, are you here? Come on up. Greg is a guy that purchased the American Dream Inn. He's an investor who's making a choice to take this hard-earned dollars and clean up Longview. His investment includes purchasing the property, asbestos abate, demolition, flea removal. Greg took a risk. Greg saw a need, and Greg became a good community partner. Come on up, Greg. And I know this is the last thing in the world you wanted to do, and I appreciate you coming up and doing this because I think it's important that we recognize when people in our community will take a chance and they'll do something for the good of the community. And chances are, you're not going to make a dime off this property, but you know what? You did it because you saw a need in our community and you saw a way to change a situation that needed changing. And I personally appreciate that, and other citizens of Longview appreciate that. There have been many, many people that have been very thankful, and they wanted to put a face to the name. And so I appreciate you agreeing to come up because this is not who he is. He doesn't do things like this for recognition, but I think it's important that we recognize people when they go out on a limb and they take a chance, and that's what you've done. And we appreciate you very, very much. Thank you, sir. I wanted to take just a moment to discuss our upcoming Go-Giver Gala. It's my distinct honor to invite you to participate in the second annual Go-Giver Gala, an event including dinner dancing honoring Go-Givers of Longview with all proceeds benefiting and beautifying our Highway 80 this year. Last year, the event was a huge success. We raised over $250,000 to help end homelessness in Longview. The event sold out twice. We anticipate another huge turnout this year. And last year, all the proceeds went towards the projects deemed in our homeless task force, and they're being put to great use, and I am appreciative of that. But during my time as the mayor, and this will be on January the 12th at 7:00 PM at ModCom, but during my time as the mayor, people have not stopped talking to me and asking me, "How can we improve the aesthetics of Highway 80?" Because it's a major artery, a major thoroughfare in our community. And I agree with our residents. Improving one of our main thoroughfares is very worthwhile, and it's very beneficial to the community from a business standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, from a retention standpoint. So it's my desire that this event will be the time of opportunity for us to come together to serve those who need serving and celebrate those in our community who have been shining examples to us as well. So as I mentioned, all the proceeds are going to benefit efforts to beautify and stimulate development along Highway 80 this year. Very sponsorship levels are available, anywhere from $1,000 to $10,000. So step on up and bring us a check. Donations will be given in honor of Go-Giver Honorees, which I'll be announcing those honorees in the next coming weeks. But to learn more about it, go to the Go-Giver Gala and the Highway 80 Project, visit longviewtexas.gov/ggg. So I want to get that out there, know that it's going to be coming up in January. I'm excited about it. I think this is going to be another great opportunity for us to do something for Longview where our residents will see a difference and make a difference. So look forward to seeing you all there and having you all participate with us. Thank you very much for enduring that with me. We are now to citizen comment. I have a few speaker cards. Mr. Jim Martin.
I just, a couple of questions I want to ask. A guy's getting $600,000 from the city to do low-income housing, and I understand the way I read it, if it didn't work out, he didn't have to pay the money back. Then I see Caterpillar is getting a quarter of a million dollars if they hire seven people. Didn't quite understand all that. But I'll put 25 to 50 people if you loan me the money without having to pay it back. I'd be more than glad to do that. I'd like to put in a shopping center. I've got several things I want to do in this shopping center myself, and I know I can hire the people, I can hire 25, 30 people in one business. And I don't know where the bank is of Longview City, but I'd like to know where I could go down and talk to somebody about the money. And another thing, I was handed yesterday a deal proposal on McQuarter Park. I see a lot of waste in that, and I hate to say this, I think y'all are going to have a tough time passing those two deals because of the waste. And I'm talking to a lot of people every day, and they say they're voting no. So I'm just telling you ahead of time, clean the act up, or you'll get no votes on the bond. And like I say, I'm going around, a lot of people asking, talking, and see what they think. And I've got this right here, I just, McQuarter Park, and the first thing I know, I brought up about two half-court basketballs. It's not only here. But a ping-pong table, two of them, $4,200 apiece? Excuse me. I don't know, I don't, I can understand the taxpayers, Longview, like y'all throw in and waste money, but I wish you'd cut my property tax because I can't see a lot of this. I see something I talked to the chief about while ago that I'm pretty sure will get me done. I'm tired of it, and I know y'all get tired of me complaining, but if somebody don't do it, everybody else, they complain to me, but they don't come down here. And I think if I could get 500 grown men, men, to come down here and complain, I think y'all might listen. But I know you're not going to listen to one person. But I thank you for listening tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. We do listen to you, sir. Thank you. Tommy Finkley.
Tommy Finkley, 3900 Hidden Hills Circle, Longview, Texas, 75604. Before I get started, I wanted to give each of you something that I brought for you today. Mr. Moore, this really has to do with your district, so I'd ask for you to pay pretty close attention. The bond that you proposed has $104 million in it, and of that, in your district in McQuarter Park, the things that were promised are the things that we've talked about in the bond. You know, like a new basketball court or stuff like that. You're proposing to buy two $4,600 ping-pong tables with our money. There's no doubt in my mind that the police station needs their new police station, but we do not need $4,600 ping-pong tables. So I want you to take these ping-pong paddles, go home tonight, all the council members. Think about the things that you are proposing to the citizens of Longview in a $100 million bond. Wants against needs. There's no reason for this. This is waste. It's hard for me to believe that the six people, seven, including Andy, sitting up here tonight have not done their homework enough and looked at the numbers and looked at the things that you're proposing that you would put this forward. A $20,000 sign, a $20,000 sand volleyball court, $8,000 in picnic tables. In the deal for McQuarter Park, it's about $2.2 million. About $700,000 out of legal fees, engineering fees, consultant fees, all kinds of fees. We don't have this kind of money. We need a police station. I agree we do. There's got to be 20 or 30 million dollars worth of waste, and the way that y'all structured it, pretty much you're guaranteed it's going to fail. Guaranteed. People are not going to go for this. And it makes it very hard for me to believe that you've done your homework as a councilperson, that you haven't seen this, that you're not aware of these things. And I know for a fact, Andy, almost every, and then I'll be wrapping up. I know for a fact, Andy, that you personally have promised four or five people to their face that we would not do these type of things, that we were going to do a basketball court, replace the one that's been there since I was 15 years old, and put new basketball courts there, that you personally promised four or five people that that's what would happen. And then we get the sheet of paper, and that's not what's on there. Volleyball courts and all kinds of stuff. So take these paddles home tonight, think about what you're doing up here, and the job that you're doing, and the homework that you're supposed to be doing to represent in our city. Everything ain't champagne and bubbles. Jeremiah Hunter.
Jeremiah Hunter, 314 East Twilight Drive. I'm here to add my voice to, basically because I've been doing the homework that I don't feel like the council has done. A couple meetings ago, Mr. Bonds questioned my integrity, asked me where I was getting my numbers from when I was talking about the budget numbers. So I have right here the cost estimates for these bond construction projects, so nobody can question where I'm getting them from. But I wanted to preface first by saying, why am I saying no on all three bonds? First and primarily is that citizens need tax relief. Texas has the fourth highest per capita local government debt in all the United States. We're pretty proud of ourselves for not having a state income tax, but we more than make up for it. We may not be quite as bad as New York or California, but we're right there with them. And yet with this bond, we want to more than double the city of Longview's outstanding debt? That's like saying, "Mr. Mortgage Broker, I don't like my house, but I still owe $200,000 on it, but I want another $300,000 mortgage so I can spruce it up." No banker would go for that. So I'm asking the citizens of Longview to not go for that either when it comes to doubling our local debt. Secondly, it's not just the city of Longview that is proposing these rate increases that would take more money from the citizens of Longview. Both Pine Tree ISD and Gregg County have just passed their budgets for next year that both have revenue increases. No, they weren't tax rate increases, but due to valuation increases, people's property taxes are still going up. So it's not just the city of Longview, it's everyone all combined. So I'm going to also reiterate, McQuarter Park is in the area that I live, so I went through it, and some things stuck out to me. We have a series of $400 trash cans. Man, I'd love to be the company that's selling those. Now, if it's something like, well, it's a poured concrete thing so that it takes a category five hurricane to blow away, okay, well, I have no doubt maybe that does cost $400. But we don't need to be spending $400 on a trash can, and I believe it's six of them is in the estimate. $1,000 for a bag toss game, I guess that's those little shuffleboard type things. They want to build two of them, cost $1,000 each. You don't need to spend $1,000 on those. It was already reiterated, those $4,600 ping-pong tables, two of those. My goodness, $115,000 for a new bathroom at McQuarter Park. You can buy a pretty decent house for $115,000, and the mayor wants to talk about our homeless problem here. Well, why don't we just pass a couple million dollars and build a bunch of homes for the homeless instead of a new bathroom for $115,000? I'm getting some incredulous looks here. I agree. I don't think any of y'all have done your homework because you would not have passed this in good conscience. Police station, $20,000 for new artwork. Hey, you know, you can argue for a new police station, but $20,000 just for artwork in the police station? No.
Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards. Anyone else like to speak? Thank you very much. We're now to presentation items. We have a proclamation commemorating the Doors Youth Transition Center, Second Annual Open a Door Campaign. Who's here tonight with Doors? Come on up. Come on up. Come on, come on. Thought I saw you back there, Brenda. I knew you were here for something. Y'all come on up, please. Okay. The Doors Second Annual Open a Door Campaign, September 16, 2018. Whereas Doors has requested the mayor by proclamation to recognize September 16, 2018 as their annual Open a Door Campaign in the city of Longview. Doors provides opportunities for homeless, poverty-stricken young people to begin to step out of poverty and assist them in stabilizing housing, gaining or improving employment, addressing physical and mental health needs, and reaching educational goals. Doors has experienced an 88% success rate in guiding young people towards improved life circumstances, including becoming self-sufficient, breaking the poverty cycle, improving to our community as citizens, and having hope for the future. So now therefore I, Andy Mack, the authority vesting as mayor of the city of Longview, proclaim September 16, 2018 as Doors Annual Open a Door Campaign in Longview. I'm going to hand this to you all, but I just want to tell you something. What you all do, part of it's on that paper, a part of it isn't on that paper. You all change lives, you give hope to people that don't have hope, and you provide a chance for them to succeed where without your help, they're probably not going to succeed. And that makes such a difference for that one person and every one person that you all help. You all are so persistent and so good at what you do, your hearts are just amazing. And I know you all, I know most of you all, and I know where you come from, and I appreciate what you do, and the citizens of Longview appreciate you, but the people that you help will never forget you. Thank you all so much.
These are three of our participants.
Amazing. Congratulations to you all. Thank you all so much. Nice to see you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Congratulations. It's a success story right here, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all so much. Keep up the good work. I love a success story. Total Safety Update. Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. Mayor, I'd like to start out by thanking you for recognizing our school resource officers tonight. They do an outstanding job working closely with our school administrators in our three school districts, so thank you for recognizing them tonight. Last Tuesday night, we had a very successful national night out kickoff party at ModCom. This is our annual kickoff event for our national night out coming up in October. We had over 200-plus individuals show up. We also had the opportunity to visit with our captains of our crime watch groups that host these annual parties and provide information to new individuals that were there that were interested in hosting a party. As of that night, we currently have 85 parties across the city that are registered. We're looking for a good, a good national night out this year on Tuesday, October 2nd. I'd like to encourage anyone else that's interested in hosting a neighborhood watch party or a block party on this particular night to please visit longviewtexas.gov/nnO to register your party. We'll get that, get that on the list, and we'll be sure to have officers and firefighters and everybody that participates in that to stop by and visit with them during their party as well. We also have a free women's safety course coming up, September 24th through the 29th. We have just a very few seats remaining. Any women that are interested in attending this program, to please visit longviewtexas.gov/women'ssafety for those that are interested, or they can call Officer Christie Bryan at 903-808-3388. We also have an Explorer Open House coming up. Any of our youth that are interested in becoming a police explorer will have an open house on Monday, September 24th from 6:30 to 7:30. This is a great opportunity for our youth that are interested in exploring, but more importantly, those that are interested in law enforcement and becoming a police officer and some of the things that we do, they can join the Explorer program, and we can get them some hands-on knowledge of what it's like to work as a police officer. Anybody that's interested, they can go to longviewtexas.gov/Explorer and fill out an application form for that. Two weeks ago, I had a distinct honor of recognizing one of our employees for 30 years of service. Deborah Raven, who's a dispatch supervisor on our day shift in our communications center, just reached her 30-year milestone, and we're hoping that she stays with us for many more years. I've had the opportunity, Deborah got hired just a little bit before I did, but I've had the opportunity to work with Deborah for the last 30 years in her communications center, and she does an outstanding job working in the dispatch center. That can be a stressful job at times, so I wanted to publicly congratulate her on her 30 years of service. So this past week, we had the anniversary, the 17th year anniversary of September 11th, 2001. And I just want to thank the Longview community for the different programs that they've done this week that have included the police department and the fire department to remember this day. We started out the day Tuesday morning at Highland Pines Nursing Home where they had some speakers and provided breakfast for the officers, the fire department, the sheriff's department. And it was their way of showing appreciation for the first responders here in Gregg County, so I'd like to thank them for hosting that event. And they've hosted that event for the last 16 years ever since September 11. Our citizens on patrol later in the day, we have a group of them here, I think. They provided us with a fabulous lunch at ModCom, again, to show their appreciation for our first responders as well. And then we finished out the day at Brookdale Longview, an assisted living with the residents there, and had a little remembrance ceremony there as well. So want to thank Brookdale for inviting us and including us in these events. They're important to us, and I know they mean a lot to the community as well. Back a few months ago, we started doing videos of different officers highlighting their career called Outside the Badge. Not only to talk about the officer, show the officer and the capacity of their duty, but also some of the things that they like to do in their free time. This month here, we're going to introduce Officer Mike Grisham as the officer that we highlighted. Officer Grisham is a 34-year veteran of the police department, and he's currently assigned to our traffic division, so I'd like to just show you a brief video of Officer Grisham.
When I was young, about seven years old, my dad bought me my first motorcycle. It was a Honda CT70. I don't think when he bought it, he probably ever thought it would blossom into what it is today, as far as how much I love him. Raced a little motocross in the Beaumont, Houston area, and I loved riding dirt bikes. I don't ride them now. I guess at my age, they're a little dangerous, you know? In '86, I got married, and my wife, she was definitely not against motorcycles. And boy, once I got on the road and we were able to travel, that's when I knew I was hooked. I have a large group that we ride with. We've been to Sturgis, and this past year, we went up Teller the Dragon in North Carolina, rode to Smokey, which was a lot of fun. But when I hired on up here, I did not expect to ride motorcycles. That was probably before the thing for my mind. Once I got on it, I knew, you know, well, this is where I want to be. It was so much fun, there were so many things to do, people liked it. You know, the public liked motorcycles. We got to do a lot of special assignments, presidential escorts, like George Bush, the elder and the younger George Bush, Bill Clinton, Jesse Jackson, some pretty important people. And that was pretty neat to be able to actually shake their hands and be around people like that. Right before I got on the motor, myself and a guy named Steve Payton, we were selected for the park patrol program. All we did was we went from city park to city park, and that was really the first time I really had a sense of community service. First game was in 1988, and I've been with U.S., as their security officer ever since, and this will be the 30th year. Now we're seeing a lot of the parents are having daughters that are drill team and all that. So it's pretty interesting that the mom comes, takes the daughter out after the game, and it's one of her ex-drill team, you know, lady picking her daughter. First game was in 1988, and I've been with the US as their security officer ever since, and this will be the 30th year. Now we're seeing a lot of the parents are having daughters that are drill team and all that, so it's pretty interesting that the mom comes, takes the daughter out after the game, and it's one of her ex-drill team, you know, lady picking her daughter up. I just felt like part of the family, and they gave me a huge responsibility to take care of these young ladies, to make sure nothing happens to them, and I take it very seriously and really enjoyed it. Go Lobo's! Woo-hoo! I'm Officer Mike Grisham with the Longview Police Department. I'm proud and dedicated in my life to serve the citizens of Longview and the Longview Police Department.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Seelman.
You don't have a question.
Oh, this seems going to be good. This is going to be good.
Mayor Matt, members of council, Mr. Bonds, thanks for the opportunity to update you on what's been going on in the fire department since our last meeting. We were very fortunate to be chosen as a spot for the Longview lady, the girls volleyball team, the Lady Lobo Girls, to do a photo shoot for some upcoming publicity that they're doing to kick their volleyball season off, which they're probably already halfway through with it by now. So they chose our fire station number six, and the main reason being, if you look at the logo that's down there in the bottom, that's the logo that that station adopted to show some pride in the community. They're actually the Longview ISD Fire Station in per se, just like Station Five is the, it's kind of the Gregton area, Station Seven's for Pine Tree, Station Four is for Spring Hill, so they've really tried to integrate some of those aspects of the community into the fire department. We want these kids to know when they see that, hey, that's our fire engine, that's our ambulance, that's our crew, because they're naturally, they're first do at Longview High School, so great connectivity there, and we're certainly proud to be a part of it. We wish them the best of seasons this year and hope they're very successful. I got to give, and keep on texting when I do this, got to give a shout out to this little guy. This little guy's name is Jackson, he's four and a half years old. He and his mom were out doing some shopping on a Saturday, they came across one of our crews out doing some training in a parking lot at a movie theater, and Jackson just felt that he had to help out the guy, so he jumped in there and he started rolling hoes and learning a little bit about the fire department. And the best thing about this, I don't know how well you can see Jackson's shirt, but it's a back-to-the-blue shirt. Jackson's dad's actually a Longview police officer, so we're hoping in about 17 more years, we'll be able to sign this guy up and put him on a red truck and help him serve the city, so we're looking forward to that. So quick shout out to Jackson, thanks for helping our guys out, man, we appreciate it. It was a great time for everybody. I'll echo the sentiments of Chief Bishop on 9/11. Our community, I said this in a public speech last night at St. Matthews, this community amazes me at the support that they put behind public safety. And so we all take time during this week, naturally, it's more than just a day now, to pause and reflect on the sacrifices that were made by public safety personnel in New York on 9/11 and across the country essentially. It's a great day of reflection to appreciate one another, appreciate the resources that we have, to go out there and do the jobs that are expected of us every day. And this community never falters at stepping up to back up public safety, and it makes me so proud to be a part of this community, to see this kind of outpouring. And I may have a few here, I may have some of the same ones that Chief Bishop had, but just our crews really had a great time with the camaraderie of getting out, sharing a meal, sharing a message, sharing some reflection and some prayer about what 9/11 is all about for us now. So there's a host of supporters there, the different agencies in the community that stepped up to really show support, and we certainly appreciate that. Red versus blue, so let's update you on that a little bit. We've had a couple of competitions over the last couple of weeks. And great, this is another great camaraderie thing. We really enjoy challenging and going up against our police department. The first one we'll talk about, this was actually a real beating contest, so this was actually the first, I think, that we've ever done this. So we squared off head-to-head at the Roadhouse, who sponsored this, for a real beating contest, and there were some proceeds that were made, and the fire department being the team that won, our proceeds are going to the East Texas Angel Network. So we're certainly glad that we're able to do something positive that's going to give back and help out in the community by winning that event. So it was a great time, I think everybody had a bellyache by the time it was all said and done, and I think it was pretty close at the end from what I'm hearing. I was out of town, wasn't able to be there that day, but the firefighters came through, certainly proud of the work that they did to beat the cops. And more recently. Actually, on Tuesday, on 9/11, we, several years ago, a group of firefighters and police officers got together and they wanted to figure out a way to take some time out to, again, sharing some camaraderie, challenge one another, compete against each other. So we had our seventh annual 9/11 golf tournament, we did it up at Lake Fork at the Link Golf Course up there. Had a great time, so there's the fire department crew. Yeah, I played, I didn't help out very much, but I was out there having a great time. The police officers actually surprised us this year because they all showed up in matching shirts. They won the trophy one time last year, and they've already got matching shirts. I hope they save their receipts, so maybe they can take them back and figure out what they're going to do next year. But it was a great day. At the end of the day, though, the score was definitely in our favor, and we got the traveling trophy back, and we're proud of that. But at the end of it, again, this was a full day of golf, it was all about that teamwork and camaraderie, getting out there, enjoying some levity and competing against one another. Great time had by all, so we thank them for that competition. And last but not least, Code Red, I'm going to keep talking about, is a free service that the city offers to receive early notification of storm warnings and such, so please go to the city's website and register yourself for that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Seelman? I just want to know, how do you judge a re-beating contest?
It was based on, they all had a certain number, and it was whoever got through at the end and going head-to-head, whoever ate all the ribs the fastest.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, no.
I'm going to leave it at that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. We had a consent agenda, any items council like pulled off for separate discussion?
Item G.
Item G? Okay, we'll move that off. Excluding item G.
No, just approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Item G, Mr. Pirtle.
I just want it clarified a little bit more. I know we've had this discussion, and Keith did, and I think I understand it, but I just wanted you to clarify it so everybody else could understand what kind of change in here.
Mayor is not here, so I'll take the question, but yeah, we're changing a couple of things in the personnel policies, once meaning the catastrophic leave eligibility criteria. We had a rule that you could donate four hours to the catastrophic leave pool, and that's a pool where employees can donate four hours of their time and be able to use time if they run out of time, if they have an injury. And the rule said that you could donate four hours of time if you've worked here six months, but you're only eligible to use the time if you've been here 12 months, so we made it if you worked here six months, you eligible to donate and use it at the six-month mark. The other rule that we would like to change would be if you were unable to work for six months with the city, our rule currently is, for whatever reason, then you are automatically terminated if you were out of time. That was for an on-the-job injury. If you are off, no, that was an off-the, yeah, that's off, I'm going to get it straight here, that's an away-from-the-job injury, six-month rule. If it's an on-the-job injury, it was a 12-month period, then you are automatically terminated, so we moved them both to 12 months. So regardless of how you were injured, you have 12 months to recover before you can come back to work, or you're eligible to come to work, and if you're able to, I hope they are, so.
So this will help in the situation we've got right now on a few people?
That's right.
Okay. That's it.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, will we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You want to oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at a budget item, consider ordinance opting 2018 tax rate and levying set tax rate. Ms. Adams, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds. This is a vote to set the FY 2018, 2019 property tax rate. The rate to be set is $38.42 for maintenance and operations, $12.57 for debt service, totaling $50.99. This is not an increase to the rate, but does exceed the effective rate.
Any discussion or questions of Ms. Adams?
Ms. Adams, before I move to increase taxes, would you explain, even though they're staying the same, would you explain to us why it shows a increase in taxes?
Well, it's higher than the effective rate, and the effective tax rate is the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax revenue for the city of Longview for the same properties in both the 2017 tax year and the 2018 tax year. So there's no increase, but the effective rate is higher than the effective rate.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would like to make a motion, if there's no other discussion, I guess.
No, feel free.
Like to make a motion, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $50.99 per $100 valuation, actually 50.99 cents, which is effectively a 1.33% increase in the tax rate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at zoning, a public hearing held to consider application S-18-05, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Matt, members of council, and Mr. Bonds. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit for a self-storage mini warehouse in a portion of Plan Development 17 located at the former Kmart location. PD 17, which is Plan Development 17, was approved to allow for uses such as retail, multifamily, single-family attached, and offices. A specific use permit is required to ensure no negative impact to adjacent properties. This portion of McCann Road is maintained by TechStot and is a principal arterial. They are designed to service relatively high-traffic volumes and have high operational speeds. Staff does find that this proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions to Ms. Choi? I have Jeff Hamilton here to answer questions if we need any questions.
I do want to ask one question if I can.
Please.
Ms. Choi, how long has that building been vacant now?
It's been vacant for over two years.
And would you have a general idea of how many people have come and looked at it?
Staff has probably talked to about five or six developers looking at this site. They just really couldn't make the numbers work with the cost of property and the cost of rehabilitation.
I was not understanding. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, that's everything I've talked to has said it's just the acquisition cost and the rehabilitation cost is very high to make a profit, so it's difficult, but.
So this is, I mean, this is the first opportunity that the Kmart building has really had to be developed that we're really aware of. Right.
Any discussion?
Who's here to talk about it?
Jeff Hamilton, Johnson face. The engineer.
Can we be with him just a second?
Sure.
Sir, Mr. Pirtle.
We have a similar situation on Loop with the Walmart building. Is the outside of this structure going to be fixed in any way, shape, form, or fashion? Is it going to, the appearance going to be made better than what it is now?
Yes, sir. The plan's for it to, just to improve the appearance, certainly maintenance around the building, clean it up, paint it, just improve the appearance of it.
So basically, the structure over, off the Loop, on the west side of the Loop, over there off of the old Walmart buildings, what we call it, it's going to be something similar to, this is going to be something similar to it then?
Certainly similar in use. It won't, it's not intended to be an ISO or anything like that, certainly better than a vacant building that we have at this site right now, and all the activities that are planned to take place inside the building as far as storage is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other discussion, a public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing held to consider application Z-18-07, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting, is the same applicant, is requesting to rezone approximately 7.02 acres of the former Kmart site from PD 17 to multifamily, three-zoned district for apartment complex. The request is actually for the portion of the property that is the parking lot of the former Kmart building. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers, any concerns about this discussion? Mr. Hamilton is also here to talk about this, we need him. Thank you for being here, sir, by the way. If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Public hearing held, application Z-18-08, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 2.953 acres of abstract 360, a Jordan survey, from agricultural to general retail zoning district. The applicant is requesting a rezone in order to install a sign that is inside the city limits. The property owner has built an office on the same property, which is actually outside the city limits. When annexation occurs, property that is annexed is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. The property, when it's developed, will then need to be rezoned to accommodate for growth and development. The frontage of this property, which is approximately 300 feet, is actually inside the city limits. This portion of East Loop 281 is maintained by TechStot and is a principal arterial roadway. This type of development is appropriate as long as access management is followed. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
This also requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions or comments on this? Mr. Hamilton has a speaker card in case we need you, you need to speak, only if you need us, if we need you. Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. Any questions? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
No, do approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now at the committee interest, Mr. Moore.
Nothing, Mayor.
Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite you to my town hall Tuesday, September 25th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Animal Care and Adoption Center, so to discuss, I think everyone knows, the bond election. So hope to see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Mr. White.
I also have a town hall meeting coming up on Thursday, September 20th, so that's next Thursday, 6:00 p.m. at my church, Winterfield United Methodist, on Tryon Road. We will be discussing anything you want to talk about, as well as just town updates and other important information, as well as the bond election, so hope that you can make it.
Mr. Wright.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Pirtle.
Nothing for me.
Mr. Bonds. I want to thank you all, I know you all, many of you all have had town hall meetings during this time, which I appreciate very much, and some of y'all had it before him not knowing, but I appreciate you having town hall meetings to hear the public, because that's what we're elected to do, is hear the public. That's what we do when we come up here, you come up here and stand up here, and we're going to hear you and listen to you. So I appreciate you all doing that, because I think it's very important that we are there to hear what people want to talk to us about. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Hope you have great turnouts. If you don't, well, you should. People should come and talk about what they want to talk about. So thank you. City of Longview voters will consider three separate propositions, ready to public safety, facilities, streets, and infrastructure, and parks as part of the bond election on Tuesday, November 6th, 2018. Voting will be held in conjunction with general November elections taking place at various polling locations established in Gregg County and Harrison County. Early voting will be held October 22nd to November the 2nd. Next day of voting, it'll be 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Tuesday, November the 6th, so come out and vote. That's what we're here for. Vote, vote, vote. Downtown Live, our free concert series continues with Galaxy on Friday, September 14th, and Bobby O. and the Mojos on Friday, September 21st. Bring us to Heritage Plaza for street food and unforgettable live music. The event starts at 5:00 p.m., usually starts at 5:30. Once again, I'll say it every time, just like Code Red, this is something you need to attend. It's a lot of fun, it's a great time to fellowship and enjoy your city, enjoy your citizens, enjoy your neighbors. So thank you for putting it on Downtown Live and continue to have great success with that. Partners in Prevention Mentoring Program provides kids with a caring, trained adult friend to serve as a mentor for guidance, support, and encouragement. The next mentor orientation is 11:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Friday, September 28th. Learn more at longviewtexas.gov/mentor. That is a very important program. Mentoring a child, once again, is one of those things that they will never forget, and you will probably move on, but you will make an impact on someone that may change their life and give them hope or a chance for a future that they'll never know without you. So if you have that opportunity and you have that desire, please go to that program, learn how to be a mentor. It's time for National Out, it's taking place on Tuesday, October 2nd. Get to know your neighbors, build partnerships with the police, learn more about crime prevention. Longview was 11th in the nation last year, then this year, want to have even more parties. Register your party at longviewtexas.gov/nno. Always a good time. Upcoming events, there are several upcoming events throughout the Longview area. Join Arts View Children's Theater for Broadway at the View, an adult night out with desserts, wine, and classic Broadway show tunes performed by friends of the theater. Your family will love the daily showings on Friday, September 21st, and Saturday, September 22nd. Tickets are on sale now at artsviewchildrenstheater.com. Home Beer Fest? Is that the way you have Home Beer Fest? Okay, there you go. We'll fill the green on Saturday, September 22nd with 37 German-style home brews and We'll fill the green on Saturday, September 22nd with 37 German-style home brews and food trucks on the side. Attendees will vote on their favorite brews. The beer is free and the benefit of being an East Texas Brewers Guild member, so if you're over 21, sign up today at etbrewersguild.org. Home Beer Fest. Like that, it's got a catch to it. Okay. Enjoy, you can eat barbecue, drinks and sweets at Longview Teen Courts Barbecue Bash on Saturday, September 22nd at Flying Feathers Ranch. Vote for the best ribs, brisket, chicken and cupcakes and listen to live music by Leap of Faith. All the details are at longviewteencourt.org. For information on these events, please check out the calendar, visit longviewtexas.com or city events, visit longviewtexas.gov/calender. Okay, before we get any further, just so you everybody knows, tonight is our last night of casual dress we've had through the summertime. Some of you didn't get the memo, but it's, oh well, yeah, there was no memo. We hadn't canceled it yet, tonight was the last night. But it's been nice being able to do that. I've had a lot of compliments on us being able to be relaxed a little bit during the summertime, but now it's time to get back to our normal dress code. So as of next meeting, we'll be back to our normal dress code at our council meeting. So thank you all for enduring that time. Survey time. If you were able to approve Highway 80, in one way, what would you most like to see? New restaurants, new businesses opening, relocating to the area, new retail shops, more open green space? Well, we had great participation on this and I'm glad to see it.